Call to order the President and Board of Trustees to order a roll call.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Liam.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. You can rise for the pledge.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on January 26th.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Presidential comments?
Just real quick, we all know about the storm we had on January 31st and the first, and we've asked our street department to make a couple of comments at this time, so Alan?
Yeah, let me give a brief update. I, first of all, I have to commend our employees. They did an outstanding job during the storm. Not one person within the department called in sick or went on vacation during the storm. Most of the employees water, sewer, and streets combined. Most employees worked 15-hour shifts throughout the storm and until the storm was ended. So I have to thank and commend our employees. They did an outstanding job. As far as the storm is concerned, just to give a little update here too as well. The storm started on Saturday, January 31st at 6:00 PM as a light rain. At that time, the village, as well as our pre-approved contractors, started applying salt to the main roadways. As the rain changed to snow, our village staff and contractors began plowing the main roadways. On Sunday evening, we requested assistance from additional contractors. The snow continued to fall until 3:00 AM Monday morning. At the end of the event, we had a total of 14 inches of snow. After reviewing the, this collectively as a management staff here and talking about the items related to the storm and how it was addressed, we agree that we could have been more liberal in applying salt on Saturday. Approximately 1,000 tons of salt was applied on Saturday between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. In total, we applied over 700 tons of salt during the entire event. However, if we had applied additional salt on the roadways earlier in the storm, it may have allowed the village to remove the snow and ice more easily before it had adhered to the pavement. Also, due to the severity of the storm, the village's entire crew was on the streets, and we relied on contractors to update us on their progress. During the storm, we had two contractors who encountered challenges and did not report these problems to the village. Thus, the village had encountered, thus the village had encountered these challenges when the contractors didn't report back, and we had to double back with our resources to take care of the contractors' routes. The Public Works Department takes great pride in serving our community, and this storm was a challenge. We appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. Lastly, and I'm going off my notes here a little bit too as well, I just want to make a comment. We collectively understand that the collective response to the storm, both contractor and village, is not what our residents have come to expect within our community too as well. Quite frankly, it didn't meet our standards as well internally sincerely. We apologize for any inconveniences that this may have caused our residences, and we will make changes in the future to improve our service level. So, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and provide an update for the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustees' comments?
I wanted to follow up on Alan's presentation. I do firmly believe that village staff did everything that we could, and we did a great job on our end, but obviously you'd mentioned the contractors did not meet our expectations. When this bid does come up again, I hope that staff can take this into consideration, as well as I would hope that we would ask for an asset test and see how many assets these contractors have available, have a guaranteed response time, and have a penalty if they don't show up and we call them, because we want to be the first customers they show up to when there's a blizzard, and not say, "Yeah, we'll be there as soon as we can, and we have a couple other accounts to take care of." And so that way we get prioritized, and those are my comments, and obviously, you know, we're learning our lessons, and I really hope that we can get that included next time. Thank you.
Approved three regular contractors, and you, I believe, went on four additional ones on an emergency basis. The two non-performing ones, are they part of our original three?
Yes, that's correct.
Got to keep that in mind for next year, I think, it's really important. I think one of them was involved in 135th Street, and that was, finally got, see pavement again. It was quite a while before it happened, so, and this is not the only area, it's just happened to be an area I ran across a lot, and it was a tough storm. You guys did what you could, but as Trustee Peck said, we need to make sure we better control of the next one. Hopefully it won't be as big, so, thank you.
I have two comments this evening. One pertains to the art studio downtown regarding the noise level at School of Rock. They are claiming that he's been working on this with staff for close to a year. Chief, if you have any update information, would be appreciated.
We did meet with Mr. Bates, I want to say sometime in early January. We've been trying to set up a meeting with Mr. Fine, who actually owns the School of Rock, him and his son, to do an additional onsite inspection. We've taken some sound readings when the bands have been playing, and at some points they're in compliance, other times they're not in compliance. So, we wanted to meet with Mr. Fine and request that we go inside his business so we can actually see. He's mentioned to us that he's made some revisions, but we have not been inside the business to physically see that yet, so we want to go in there and see what type of revisions he has made and see if, excuse me, see if that has rectified the situation and brought it back within compliance. So it is a, it is still an ongoing process, and I, we will continue to update the board as far as where we're going with that.
Thank you. My second comment pertains to rules of the road. I took advantage of the nicer weather this past weekend and got the bicycle out. I'm quite concerned that a number of drivers do not understand the rules of the road when it comes to bicycles. By state law, two bicycles can ride abreast in a lane on the road. I rarely do that, but I ride on the road myself, and drivers seldom give you the three-foot clearance that is required under the law as well, even when there is no oncoming traffic, and they could easily merge into the other lane to pass you. So, if anyone's listening or anyone cares about the rules of the road and bicyclists, it's a very dangerous proposition if you're not paying attention. Thank you.
One additional question, Chief. Of the bad roads conditions that we had, did we have a lot of accidents as well or not?
We didn't have, excuse me, we did not have a lot of accidents. We had a few property damage accidents, and I believe maybe one minor personal injury crash. The vast majority of the vehicles we dealt with were actually slide-offs into ditches. They had to be pulled out later on, but as far as crashes, it wasn't anything too out of the ordinary.
That's good, so, thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? This will be the time for public comments, not to exceed three to five minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Mark Allen Schimura. Just want to say thank you to Alan for last hand this up operations. Going to encourage the after-action review to an ongoing task. I do feel that the private contractor component was significant, and also, and private Alan or not, also concern as far as the overlap with state, both townships, their jurisdiction, their response, plowing, and where the villages and back step up care of it. Files are. Thanks again, and I'm.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing them, we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is Warehouse 109, 14903, South Center Street.
Yes, thank you. This matter is coming before the board for a conceptual discussion or conceptual review. This matter is the applicant specifically proposing a special use for a private club or recreational facility at the property, commonly known as 14903, South Center Street. I guess regardless of context, this property is just located off Center Street, between Center Street and Eastern, just south of the Canadian National right-of-way. This case did go before the planning commission approximately a month ago, and there was general support for this proposed use. The applicant is proposing a private club or recreational facility for approximately 3,800 square feet in Suite 109 of this building. This building is currently zoned I-1, which is light industrial, and there are a number of current uses in this building ranging from a small microbrewery facility to a athletic training facility, a dog training facility, sort of miscellaneous uses. The applicant is proposing to have specifically 20 events per year, and each event would have a maximum number theoretically of 150 people. As staff has outlined, based on staff's analysis, even using the maximum analysis as parking, there'll be a total of over 128 parking spaces, which would basically address the required parking. The applicant has assured us there would be no conflict between the dog training facility and the proposed private recreational facility. So from a parking perspective, based on our analysis, we do believe there's enough parking. Staff did have some concern about the potential impact on the residents since their proposed quiet enjoyment. There was a very healthy and vibrant discussion at the planning commission about that. Pursuant to the planning commission's concerns, the future uses of this record, private club would be limited to 12:00 AM, so all existing operations of this private club would have to cease by 12:00 AM as per stipulation of the planning commission. In addition, the planning commission did stipulate that there would be no outdoor music or outdoor activity per se as relates to music allowed as relates to this proposed private club. So, the applicant is actually here this evening to answer any questions that the village board may have as it relates to this proposed use, but again, it's a proposed, proposed special use in this I-1 facility. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the village board may have.
I have one, Michael. Museums are in what category? And zoning ordinances, a museum is permitted where?
Museums, I generally believe, we do allow them, I believe, in a B-5, and also I think commercial B-3 regarding museums. I would have to double-check on that, I haven't really looked at that classification in a while.
I haven't either, that's why I was hoping you remember, but the particular unit, 109, is almost a museum in its current configuration. It's got antique cars, it's got antique motorcycles, it's got antique RVs, you know, and I don't know what the definition of a club is, but it strikes me as a sort of a combination, unique museum that will end up hosting some parties because people like that in a particular environment.
Or, I think one way to classify is, it's also been a private warehouse for a private collection. That is a permitted use in I-1. So somebody could have a warehouse, have a private car collection, a private motorcycle collection, or whatever they desire, and have private parties, you know, from a private perspective, that would be permitted use. But because they are proposing a private club slash recreational facility here, it does, from my perspective, it does require a special use. And I thought it would behoove us to take this through the process because obviously there is legitimate concerns from the neighbors, and there was a very good discussion about that, and I think the applicant has tried to address the residents', residents' concerns as it relates to this proposed use. That's why I wanted to bring it through the public process.
Yeah, the stipulations, I think, take care of probably what the residents were complaining about, the noise and so on, so I think those, and the time, closing at 12 o'clock, midnight type thing. And if the applicant's satisfied with that, I think that should cover those. There's one piece of wording that concerns me, I'm not sure the definition of live music. Is it a live band? Is it a DJ? What do we define as live?
I think the applicant has agreed that there would be no, the doors have to be closed. There's any, either a live music, i.e. a DJ or an actual band. And the applicant's actually here just to clarify that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure DJs were included in the live music definition.
That's at the planning commission, and my recollection was if there was a DJ, that would also be included.
Should I address that? Is it on? Okay.
I don't think so.
The question here, Bill, about live music or music on the patio itself outside, all music will be kept inside. We anticipate, we will not have music outside, be it live or DJ outside.
You can use the patio, but you just won't have music, loudspeakers out there?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Another question, a lot of the, 150 is a lot of people for events. My guess is some of the events may be considerably smaller than that. I'm wondering if there's a need to try to specify a limit of 20 in a year. You may, may want to use it for more than that, as I see it. If the groups are small, I don't see it as a problem if there's, I don't see a reason to limit it to 20, let's put it that way.
I'm not quite sure how the number of 20 came about. We felt, my wife and I, that we still, and my daughters, still want to have a life. We don't want every weekend of ours taking up having a, hosting events, so we said we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of 20 per year. We've had some interest on someone like Diageo wanting to host a meeting in the afternoon for, to get away from their factory and have a learning meeting with maybe 30 people, 40 people. So I'd hate to see that classified as one of our 20 events. So some limits of 20s, all of a sudden we're having a no, a no, a no-impact event count as one of our 20, so, and I don't know how we'd keep track of that either.
Well, I don't know that we have to specify it has to be 20 either, but I think the key is the events should not impact the neighbors, and I think the stipulations take care of a lot of that, particularly if the music's on the inside. The building actually faces railroad tracks. I don't think the railroad tracks are going to complain. Takes a while to get the, and I think you're pretty well insulated in the building as well, so, I think it's an excellent use. I commend you also, by the way, for taking what was a vacant building for quite a long period of time and come up with some very creative productive uses out of it, made it really an attraction, if you will, for Plainfield, and I think this is a nice addition, so I hope it does go ahead.
Well, is that the planning commission as well, and there were people for, people against, as you might have guessed, in the neighborhood like that. I think where it's located, it's away from the neighborhood. I think, you know, you've made a lot of concessions to try to make this as pleasing as possible as far as people leaving and all that. It seemed to me at the, at Planning Commission, there were more complaints about the noise from the health club working out at 5:30 in the morning or whatever, the music from that than, than anything. And if there is an issue with some of the parking, maybe there'd be a way to filter people out towards 126 versus back into the neigh, excuse me, the neighborhoods, so you wouldn't have as much of that. But given that your private collections in that building, I can't see that this is going to be an area that isn't going to be watched very carefully. And, and again, I agree with what Bill's saying too as far as the 20, maybe, maybe it's 20, you know, nighttime weekend events a year or something like that, and then people want unlimited for your other times or whatever. I don't think that's, I don't think you can put necessarily a number on it.
We will, one of us will be represented at all times when we're having an event there. My daughters, my wife, myself, or hired person that represents us, will be there at all times, because I do have a lot of nice things on their collection there, and people like to see them, and we're amazed at the interest of, and I'm more amazed at the girls that want to have their marriage in front of a motorcycle.
There you go.
It's a fun place.
I would support it, so, thank you.
Couple of quick questions, Mr. Olson. You had mentioned there would be an outside area that would be fenced in, correct?
Yes, it'll be, there'll be a gate, the outside area will be totally fenced, so people won't wander out onto the railroad tracks.
Excellent. The other one was, Trustee Bonucci mentioned possibly working with staff and having the language, say maybe 20 nighttime events. I think if we're, make sure we're very definitive, events that begin after XPM or whatever, you know, is workable with the applicant, I think might be a good modification to the language then. If you have a Christmas party for Diageo at 3:00 in the afternoon, I don't, I don't consider that a nighttime event. That would be, those would be my comments with Mr., from Mr. Olson. Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Police Department Fiscal Year 2015, 2016 Budget Presentation.
Before I hand this over to Chief Conapek and to Mrs. Plekum, this is the third of our recent conversations regarding the budget, and continuing in that line, Chief Conapek will present the status of the department and his proposed budget. After tonight, we will, and as well, Mr. Persons and Mr. Jessen will have a conversation regarding the capital budget. Excuse me. After tonight, we will bring all of the materials together and have a conversation again with the board regarding the budget as discussed, and have a conversation as well as we find ourselves, if we're in a position where we can look at staffing needs and the like, begin to see if we can establish some priorities with the board as to which positions or what areas warrant the attention first. And at that point then, Mrs. Plekum and I will continue to tie down our revenues. We had a great conversation recently on those revenue estimates. As you know, the governor's office is planning on taking a look at the local government distributive funds, which is a rather substantive form of revenue for the village. If it goes as proposed, it could be as much as an $890,000 cut to our budget, our corporate account. So, we're keeping a close eye on those matters, so, and we'll be bringing that back to you. And again, Mrs. Plekum, that date that we have targeted is?
The next board workshop, the 23rd?
23rd, yes. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Conapek.
Thank you. This year's, in this year's budget proposal, I actually have, Mike, I get control down here. In this year's budget proposal, we'd first like to highlight some of the successes or the good things that we have going on at the police department. As I've talked about over several years, I mentioned several times per year, we have a traffic safety program, a traffic education program that I would rate second to none, not only in the state of Illinois, but throughout the entire country. Sergeant Eric Munson and all the members of the police department have put together traffic safety initiatives, traffic enforcement initiatives, and worked with our engineering department to identify and try to correct some of the other traffic problems that we have in town. And because of those efforts, we continue to be recognized through awards and other types of recognition as far as the level of traffic safety and traffic education that we do in the village. Additionally, over several internet blog sites and other assorted items on the internet, several areas have been highlighted as far as Plainfield being a great place to live. One of those reasons is because we have a very low crime rate. One of the websites specifically, NeighborhoodScout.com, actually last year listed Plainfield in the top 100 safest communities in the entire United States. That's for communities of 25,000 people or more, ranking us at number 85. Additionally, we continue to maintain our Calea standards. We've been doing that over several years, and what Calea stand, Calea is basically the standard that law enforcement across the country try to meet to ensure that we have the proper policies in place, have some of the programs in place that help communities' public safety programs, and also ensure that our personnel working for our police department meet certain standards to ensure that they have the latest information, the best knowledge, and also access to the best technology out there to help law enforcement, and in turn law enforcement, helping that community achieve a low crime rate. As I had mentioned, I believe at the previous meeting, or it may have been a meeting before that, this is our crime index ratings that we've accumulated over the last few years. And you'll notice that last year, at the end of 2014, we had one of the lowest drops that we've ever had, one of the lowest levels in our crime index, and these are crimes against persons and also crimes of, against property in, I'm sorry, in Plainfield. We had over a 21% reduction in crime in Plainfield based on the efforts of the personnel within our department and also working with the members of our community to make this a safe community. With that being said though, there are some challenges that we do face. One of them is that our personnel are getting older. In the next 10 to 15 years, we have the very strong possibility of losing over 75% of our sworn personnel because, because of their age. When I started in the department 20-plus years ago, I was one of the oldest chronological people on the department, and our average age, I think, was under 28 years old. Now we have several people that are in their 40s and beyond, and again, because of, because of not being able to bring additional personnel on over the last few years, our force continues to get older and older. Some of the problems we've experienced because of that have been some injuries to officers, things like that, that come along with workforce getting older.
And I think the chief just called you old.
Trust me, I'm a lot older than Ken. One of the things I would like to highlight as far as our workforce is, we did a survey of numerous departments in Northern Illinois about two years ago, departments that are smaller than us, same size, same size as us, and also departments that are slightly larger than us. And as you see, as of the data two years ago, we ranked at the bottom as far as per capita officers to population. The national average is typically 1.8 officers, which is up in this range up here, and you can see we are near the bottom. And again, this data is almost two years old. Right now, if you look at our data over the last 20 years, and again, this goes back to when Ken and I and several other people were hired, we started out at three officers per 1,000 residents, and over the last 20 years, those numbers have steadily declined. They've leveled off over the last couple of years, but I, I would guess that's probably because the population has leveled off. But the per ratio of officers to population has steadily declined over the last 20 years. With that being said, what the police department is asking for are some additional patrol officers. We are asking for two officers. One would be assigned to the traffic unit. Again, every time we talk to someone in town, they have other issues, but inevitably, traffic is one of the biggest issues that come up in the conversation as far as the is one of the biggest issues that come up in the conversation as far as the amount of traffic, traffic enforcement, traffic complaints, things like that. So one of those officers that we would propose, we would like to place into our traffic unit for our afternoon rush hours, basically the time when people are coming back into town or coming back through town from wherever they work. We'd also, with another officer, we'd also like to create a, another, a newly created cover position. Basically, we would adjust our scheduling right now if we afforded that second officer, so we would have two officers that could work the 10, the 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM shift, which typically shows the largest amount of call volume during that time, and we would have coverage seven days a week for both platoons. If you recall, we work off a two-platoon system. So those officers would be working a little bit, vast majority of their time on the day shift platoon, and then part of their shift would also be during the night platoon. That would help incredibly, again, during our peak business, busy hours, but it'll also help during our roll call. We would have someone actually on the street along with our traffic person, so in the event we do have a call for service, especially an emergency type call for service during those few minutes that we're doing roll call, we have officers already in their cars able to respond to those emergency type situations. We're also seeking two new vehicles to replace vehicles that have excess of 90,000 miles within the patrol division. Those two vehicles would be Ford Interceptor sedans would be consistent with how we've changed over our fleet over the last couple of years. Just to give you a, to highlight what entails going into hiring an officer, it's not like we could hire an officer today as far as swearing them in, and they're on the street tomorrow. It is an extended process. We could be fortunate, I don't recall off the top of my head if we have any sworn officers on our current eligibility list, that would speed up the process somewhat because we wouldn't have to send them to an academy. However, if we don't have officers that are already sworn, it is a very protracted process from the time they get hired till the time they're actually on their own off probation. As you see, I list some of the things that they touch base with, and if they go to, if they do have to go to a police academy, they touch base on the numerous criminal laws, traffic laws, defensive tactics, driving, physical fitness, communication, evidence collection, pretty much, if you can imagine that a police officer has to do it, that's what they're taught in the police academy. Again, based on the budget starting May 1st, the first academy that would start after that is July 6th. The officer would have to go to the academy approximately until the end of September. And at that point, then they, the officer would go into our field training program. Our field training program is approximately 14 weeks long, depending on how they are progressing through. So with that timeframe, that new officer hired going to the academy July 6th would not be on the street by themselves until January, early January of 2016. And we have a one-year probation period, so from the time that person's hired until the time they get off probation, you're looking at two years, almost two years, from the time we're meeting right now. So it is a very protracted process before that officer can actually be on their own off probation. This just, this slide just highlights where we would be placing those officers if we did get the two officers. Again, we would be, oops, excuse me, wrong way. We would be placing the one cover officer here on one of the platoons, and then we would move another officer that's already on the department to the other cover shift to cover that roll call area and also our high-volume call time during the day. And then our traffic officer would be placed down here in the traffic unit from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, again, during our heaviest travel times in the village. The Community Service Division, the Community Service Division, which is made up of community service officers, code enforcement, and other support functions, they're asking, we currently have one full-time code enforcement officer and one part-time code enforcement officer. They are asking that we make the part-time position a full-time position, based on call volume, logistics, communication with the community. Right now, with a, with a part-time individual, it's hard to keep a good dialogue with the community, because again, they're calling in, looking to speak to this person, and depending on what his schedule is, he may not be available, and they may have to wait a day or two before that person's back to work. So with a full-time position, we'd be able to fill in those voids, and we'd be able to effectively split the village in half with our two code enforcement people to address those issues around the community. Just to give you a highlight of some of their activities, obviously, the biggest thing we deal with are weeds and grass complaints, typically from, depending on the growing season, but typically from about April till almost middle of October in some years, again, depending on how the weather's going. Last year alone, we dealt with almost 2,500 just weeds and grass complaints. During the slower parts of the year, if you will, the winter months, we continue to work with the building department, the fire district, and other entities in the village to deal with property maintenance. We do that during the summer as well, but deal with property maintenance issues, some rental property issues, and other, basically, quality of life issues that may arise throughout the year. So weeds and grass take up a good part of it, but some of those other issues are very in-depth as far as if we're dealing with a property that is not maintained well. And I'm not just talking weeds and grass, I'm talking about something where the building is, for lack of a better term, dilapidated, either inside or outside, and the property owner or the renter doesn't want to take care of it. It's a very in-depth, long, drawn-out process where, you know, we potentially may even have to go to court with some of these individuals. So it takes up a lot of time. The Community Service Division is also requesting one vehicle, a small SUV pickup truck or sedan to assist with their functions. With the equipment and installation, it would be approximately $25,000. The Administrative Division, which is basically our courts, our records, our investigations division, they are asking for some replacement vehicles. One vehicle within investigations that currently has over 113,000 miles on it, they're requesting a replacement for that. And we're requesting for two replacement vehicles for our court personnel, our attorneys. Basically, they have to go back and forth to court, mainly in Will County, but there are occasions where they have to go to other locations for either meetings or legal proceedings. Currently, they're driving two vehicles that are asset forfeiture vehicles, requiring them from other venues, and they're starting to show their age, and it's just not worth trying to maintain those vehicles. So we would be asking for two vehicles. The nice thing about them is we don't have to put any type of emergency equipment or any additional costs on them, just the vehicles themselves. This slide would just highlight where the personnel would be placed in our department, again, if approved. Again, we have, we have our additional traffic officer, we have our two cover officers with one of them being a new officer, and then our part-time code enforcement person would be moved to a full-time position. I'm also going to be highlighting the Pima budget and the Police Commission budget real briefly. For the Pima budget, one of the initiatives we would like to do this year is we would like to work with the community to try to disperse a number of weather alerting radios to the community. These radios typically run in the mid-20 range. However, we've worked with Walgreens and also another vendor, where we're able to get these radios at a discount price for the village, and in turn, the village would sell them at even a more discount rate to the public. This is a program that's been run in other communities in our area, and it's been very successful. It gives people that, for whatever reason, don't have the opportunity to get a weather alerting radio, the opportunity to get one, and the price we would be looking at is $10 a radio. So aside from the amount that's budgeted, the village would actually recoup a little bit of the money that we're budgeting as we sell those radios to the public. One of the emphasis we're trying to do, especially in light of the tornado we had last summer, is we're trying to encourage people to get those weather alerting radios. Although the sirens are very effective for their purpose, that being outdoor warning, especially, you know, during the daytime when people are working outdoors, if a storm's hitting late at night or in the middle of night, when this tornado hit approximately 10 o'clock at night, you don't have many people outside. These weather alerting radios you place in your house or your place of work, and they alert you 24 hours a day. And again, they're, they're a much more reliable way to, for people to get weather alerts. We're talking tornadoes, but would also encompass winter storms, it would encompass flooding, things along those lines. So that's one of the big things that we're looking to do with Pima is a outreach program with the public, try to facilitate putting weather alerting radios out there. Additionally, one other thing is we're looking to update some outdated equipment such as fire extinguishers, and then also increase our search and rescue budget, which basically, our search and rescue team, again, I would put them up against anybody in the state. They've gone throughout almost all of Northern Illinois, as far south as Pontiac to help look for missing children, missing adults that maybe have medical disabilities. They've worked with police agencies, and because of some incidents in our town, they've put in hundreds of hours of searches here in the village of Plainfield over the last several years. They're a very valuable asset. And then contingencies as we respond to emergencies, especially if they're long, such as the blizzard we had last weekend. We do like to buy our folks food and things like water, obviously, we want to keep them hydrated, so contingencies help with those type of emergency responses. And the Police Commission, pretty simple on this one. By law, they have to conduct a initial officer eligibility test every two years, and at the end of this year, that two-years process is coming up. So they do have to conduct another round of testing towards the end of 2015, and that estimate would be about $10,000 to cover the expenses for the testing that would take place in October, November of this year. Overall, the budget remains pretty stagnant as far as how it's presented. There are some increases, but overall, it's pretty status quo as far as previous years. But if anybody has any questions on any aspect, Pima, police, or Police Commission, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
John, I have a few. You mentioned the cars to replace have over 90,000 miles. Is that, was that correct?
That's correct. The ones in patrol, the other ones have even more than that.
Is that a standard in most PDs?
Typically, it's between 75 to 100,000 plus. I'll be honest with you, you get to some departments, and I'll use an example, we donated some cars to an agency down in Southern Illinois a couple of years ago, you may recall that. And when we donated those cars, they had 150,000 miles on it, and that agency was ecstatic because that had the least miles of any of the cars in their fleet. So it varies, but for the agencies around this area, that is pretty much the standard, yes.
I remember the squad that I drove down to Slidell, Louisiana, was so old, the speedometer didn't work.
How old was it?
Old. Almost as old as you, Mayor. A couple more questions. Oh, school officer, this is page four of 10. We, we, the village shares the cost with the school district on that, correct?
That is correct.
Is it a 50/50 agreement?
Yes, it is 50/50.
Thank you.
Yeah, through the school year.
And the following page, page five of 10, salaries full-time. How many full-time employees are there in the Police Records Division?
We have four civilians and one sergeant that oversees records.
All I have, thank you.
A couple of questions. Looking at the fiscal 2014 actual and the proposed budget, obviously salaries are a major factor, but it's a jump of $700,000. Did we add people this last year? $500,000 to go from 14 to 15's budget. I know you presented last year the retirements and so on, I'll come back to that in a minute, but did we add any people?
Are you talking the overall budget for the Police Department?
I'm looking at the total Police Department budget on the front. 6.3 million in '14, and the adopted budget was 6.7 million, and we're proposing 6.9 million for 2016. And this doesn't include any additional people, but there's a lot of additional salary.
We did not add any additional people last year. Actually, we, we lost some people to retirement, we placed them, but as far as putting additional people on, we did, we have not increased our numbers at all, no.
I think there was a vacant position within that point in time that was replaced between the two fiscal years, if I remember correctly, and there was a new hire that was added early this fiscal year.
There's an overlap that, okay.
Correct, and I think it was retirement-related or something of that nature.
Correct, so the actual, from that year, is, it seems reduced because we had some staff reductions. Well, not staff reduction, but there was a vacancy for a period of time.
Correct, correct.
But overall, it looks like projected pretty much what you've had with some minor changes. As far as the additional people, you make a very persuasive case, however, you got a unique situation. You're getting old because nobody wants to leave, which means there's no mandatory retirement. So when you hit 20 years, you don't have to leave, and if I remember, nine, 10 years ago, we were losing a lot of people because they went elsewhere, because they could get a better deal or something. So we had a turnover. Now we don't have a turnover because you guys are so good and so successful. And that makes planning a tad bit more difficult, exactly when we should add the people and so on. We need to add some, without a doubt, because somebody's clearly going to go, and you're right, it does take quite a while to qualify people. Let me ask the question though, in terms of if somebody is sworn in another municipality, if you will, can they come in without going through that entire?
They, they would still have to go through our field training program, they would not have to go to a police academy, but they still would have to go through, depending on how fast they pick it up, the 14 weeks may be abbreviated, but we would strive for the 14 weeks to train them on all the things that they need to know with the Police Department. And then they still would have that one-year probation as well, but they just wouldn't have to go through the police academy.
Okay, some possible, same. It makes it manpower, planning, if you will, a bit more difficult just because of the situation, not much turnover and so on. One other question though, and it's, I'm not sure how directly impacted you are, but the state trying to do something about the pensions right now, I can see a lot of people leaving to get their pensions before something changes. That's another complication, and we may need to see what the state is doing with, you know, government employees, but police and fire are probably going to be separate, but that whole dynamic may well impact the rate that people retire too. So we've got a lot to watch out for.
It absolutely may. One thing, one change they've made already is for our newer officers and those, we basically have two officers that fall in this category, is they've actually increased the minimum age when you can retire as a police officer now. It used to be 50, now it's 55. Again, the vast majority of our sworn officers, that doesn't affect, but our two newest officers, that would affect, so I'm sure I'll be long gone before they reach anywhere near that age, but, but that is one change they've made already.
One of the benefits that we do have is that our local police officer pension fund is actually in a pretty decent position. The Village Board has a longstanding tradition of putting in the entire actuarial estimate. I'm fumbling over the words because, again, we just have a whole new litany of ways on which to describe. We no longer call them actuarially assisted liabilities, they have a new name and I, all, but nevertheless, our pension fund is actually in a very good position. That being said, I will point out that we, we will likely see some new footnotes in our next audit as it relates to that. So it will look as though we're performing horrifically, but actually, we're going to be in a very good position. They want us to state the overall debt obligation, not just a deficit obligation, so it kind of will change the reporting structure, but our pension fund is actually in very good shape, so.
Chief, you and I had a conversation about civilianizing the position in records. What was the timeframe on that?
Well, right now, we have a sergeant that oversees our records department, and actually, she also, Sergeant Myers is also our CLEA coordinator, so she's basically doing double duty. It was pretty evident within the last two years, when we basically had to pick the CLEA accreditation up from nothing, and she had to put it together in about a six-month period. So it was pretty taxing for her, but she did an excellent job to the point where we did get reaccredited through CLEA. Be honest with you, we have not started a process of civilianizing that yet because she is... she is doing double duty right now. And placing her on the street as a sergeant, I don't know if it would have much of an impact. We really need the, for lack of a better term, the foot soldiers, the patrol officers on the street as far as the visibility.
I, I have in front of me a report from the City of Chicago just a year ago. They civilianized 292 officers and saved the city 6.4 million to 16.6 million through this partial civilianization. So I would encourage more discussion on that and more planning as we move forward.
Well, as everyone comes forward, it's all going to come down to where's the money going to come from, which I guess is the question for the administrator and for Tracy Plakem. You know, we'll look at the needs and that, and a lot of them, obviously, they all make sense. The code enforcement, I, I don't see how we can have a code enforcement, one and a half people in this village, just from the few calls that I've experienced. And the only thing I would, I would say on, on that particular one, which is a very small part of this, I would really like to see more of a structure of how it's going to be handled. And I, back and forth with Commander Ruggles, trying to connect and more my fault than his trying to get together. But I'd like to see a priority. One of the things I definitely would like is that when somebody comes, calls in to report something, it's not an anonymous report. It's not just some random neighbor that's going to go out there, decide to say something or whatever. Because I think that's a waste of people's time. I mean, you can take the report, we have to take the report, whatever. But I think that if you want, if you want to actually make that report to the Police Department on someone, you need to own it. Because I'm tired of, I'm tired of things like that, being used to just go after people and I'm just not going to support that. And also, I'd like to see how we're going to prioritize some of this because, as you know, some things are not as horrible as others. If someone's grass is a little high, yes, it's annoying and it's awful to neighbors. But we've also had times when buildings have been abandoned, you know, left unboarded, kids have gotten in. There's, in my own neighborhood, there was, you know, pool that was left unattended with the gate wide open and wa- old water and that, and there're dead animals. It's a, it's a big story, but anyway. And, and they, and the team, you know, acted on it very well. And so, I mean, it's not a criticism of them. But how does that get prioritized over maybe something that's not as life-threatening or personal safety-threatening? So a couple of things like that I'd like to see, you know, but I, I think you need the second full-time person to do that. You probably need a lot more than that, but I'd like to see it prioritized. And I think the anonymity has to go away. I know we just approved a few weeks back or a couple of months back, a part of our online program that lets people report things to the village online. And there again, if it's coming in anonymous, fine, report it. But I, I don't think that should be something taken seriously because enough is enough.
We do have some parameters that we go by as far as the anonymous reporting. We have extremes on that. We'll get an anonymous call and they'll say, this entire subdivision is terrible. Well, how do we act on that? However, if someone calls, for whatever reason, sometimes, even on the criminal side of it, for whatever reason, sometimes people don't identify themselves. If, if someone does not want to identify themselves and they have a specific complaint, we will still go out and look at it, especially if it's something of a life safety matter. But again, if, if they're just making a blanket comment and they're not identifying themselves, then we typically don't do anything with it. Part of the reason we do like to have them identify themselves is because inevitably, we'll always have questions, even if we know what property it is, we'll still have follow-up questions for that person as far as maybe how long it's been going on or what other things are you seeing with it. So if the person identifies themselves, we're able to get those follow-up questions answered. Otherwise, we're, we're making assumptions and, and making guesses and obviously that slows down, slows down the process. As far as the, and, and I'm having a brain meltdown, you had a second point and I can't remember what it was right now.
About the, about the priority prioritizing?
Oh, yes. Yes. On the priority, obviously, life safety is, is our top priority. But I think our code enforcement folks do an excellent job and Commander Ruggles and Sergeant Mullisack do an excellent job prioritizing our calls for service. Anything life safety, we've had some buildings that, working with the building department, that are absolutely just not structurally sound. And we, that, that's at the top of our list as far as taking corrective action. We're even working with the fire district. As far as some of the, for lack of a better term, some of the nuisance complaints, the grass, the weeds, maybe a fence is falling down, something like that, quality of life or property maintenance, we try to treat them all equally. The weeds and grass, actually across the board, the first thing we strive for is compliance. It is, it is pretty extreme that we get to the, to the level of where we're going for actual enforcement. People have been very good from property owners to renters to work with us to try to get their, their properties in compliance. But like I said, for all the good ones we deal with, we do have some problem properties that we do have to take it to the next level where we do get to the enforcement actions.
And I do want to say, my, my interaction with Commander Ruggles on this has been excellent. I mean, he's been very responsive, him and his team. It's just that it's not enough of a team. So I understand that, so thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions? Mrs. Plakem can go over the numbers in detail if you're interested. I know you all have had a chance to go over them, but if you, if you'd like, we can have...
I mean, the only thing I'd like, was going to highlight is that between the current fiscal year and, and the proposed fiscal year budget, again, no new staffing is included in the budget that you're looking at tonight. We'll bring that back again at the next workshop as we look at our revenues and all the general fund organizations in one, in one meeting, so we can talk through that. What you see here is about a 2% increase between the current budget that we're in today. And what's interesting to note is the lines are being held on all divisions other than salaries and benefits, which is somewhat under control of union contractual obligations as well as health benefits and insurance purposes. So we're taking conservative estimates on the, the benefit side of things. We'll see how they shake out. Our renewal is July 1, so we're going through those renewals at this point. We've put a conservative number within the budget. But other than that, no new additional staff is within the budget you're looking at tonight. And as it relates to the capital items that were discussed, those are within the capital fund that we'll be talking about next. The Police Department has $225,000 budgeted for vehicles and equipment in the capital program. So the vehicles that we're talking about will come back to the Board for approval through the next fiscal budget. It'll be placed as a line item within the capital fund that we'll talk about next. And if there's no questions, we can move to capital. We can always come back to police as well if there's anything else that comes up. I'll let Alan take over on the capital side.
Thank you very much. Well, spring is only six weeks away and we are looking forward to that. And we're looking forward to the coming construction season too as well. There are a lot of exciting projects that are going on there, out, out there within the village. And we know that it's a challenging time within the state, but yet, through the engineering staff and all the support in public works and the support of the Mayor and Board, we seem to find ways to find some grant money and get some projects done too as well. So the first one that I'll talk about, and these are the same projects that we did look at back in September, so this will be a little bit of a recap. And I'll move through it very quickly since we've been briefly through this too, but I can give an update. 127th Street between Hags to Tuttle is actually in this area of, between Meadow Lane. It's that unimproved section that currently does not have curb and gutter. It has the deeper ditches and I can tell you from riding along with the street department employees during the storm, that this was a challenging area for some drivers without the curb and without the deeper ditches. And it is an area that needs attention. Fortunately, the village was approved for a $2 million grant for construction. We anticipate within this year's budget and within the next couple of months that we will have a presentation where a firm will come and talk about an engineering services agreement to get the Phase 1 completed and the Phase 2. As part of the process, the federal process, we do have to go through a formal Phase 1 and Phase 2. A lot of the work related to the Phase 1 and the storm water calculations have already been completed by the developer, yet they're 15 years old. So we're going to bring all that information together and submit it to the state and then it'll move on for design and into construction as quickly as we possibly can. But there's a $2 million grant on this project. The next project is the Ren Mc Road reconstruction project. And these are both federal grants. This is approximately a $1.5 million federal grant. This is within our five-year plan and the last project and this project are both consistent with the villages, with the community-wide strategic plan that we have. This project, we have internally slated it to be started no sooner than the completion of the reconstruction of Route 30. So for Route 30, it's a two-year project and the Board and the public may not be aware, but the Board is aware. IDOT did have a bid opening and they're reviewing those bids and we expect an award sometime this month in construction to start on Route 30 this summer. It's approximately a two-year project. This project would start approximately three years from now, but it does have a $1.5 million grant attached to it. We've already met with the Park District and with the township to talk about some partnerships related to this project as a whole, and that's gone very, very well. Bicycle and pedestrian improvements were, are very popular and very important to the community within the strategic plan. This is 135th Street. Mr. Justin has informed me that we're very confident that our part of the improvements will be completed before May 1st. They're in this current year budget. After that or in coordination, we're hoping that the CN can complete their improvements as far as the crossing is concerned at the same time and, but no later than midsummer is the commitment that we have. There will be a new crossing, pedestrian crossing at this location that's greatly needed. This is another project where we're receiving over 80% in grant funding for this project too as well. Other projects, and we've kind of thrown them in, I won't hit on every single one. There's anticipated sidewalk extensions, pedestrian crossings as far as these locations and these intersections are concerned, and either new sidewalk or multi-use paths at each one of these locations. The Board's familiar with, with all these areas, I know, but all these areas, including Edwards Campus, Heritage Meadows, which is Van Dyke Road, Meadow and Lockport Street, Fort Beggs over by Central High School are all included within the program. And in the next slide, we have additional locations, Fraser Road, Dayfield, this is also over by Edwards on the other side. And then a real serious continued look at the Route 59 crossings. Specifically, 135th Street is our top priority. We have had discussions with IDOT and will continue to have discussions with IDOT, but as well as 127th and 119th Street are great candidates to get some actual crossings at those pedestrian crossings at those locations. Harvest Glen is another location where the sidewalk ends and there, it'd be nice to have an interconnection to that subdivision at Harvest Glen. Route 30 and 143rd Street is another location, or I'm sorry, Route 30, 143rd, and we affectionately call it Wallen on the south side too as well. This is over by the Family Video. There're currently temporary signals there. We do not have the Opticom system, which is part of the police and fire preemptive electronics that help operate that signal. They don't typically do that on a temp signal. We would like this to become a permanent signal in the future. Mr. Justin and I did have a meeting up in Schaumburg with the head of IDOT to talk about this location. They have informed us that they will willingly be partners and assist us with property acquisition as well as forward an agreement to pay their proportionate share for their legs, which is actually the most expensive part of the project, and programming within their five-year plan too as well. So look for this one in the near future. They would like us to take the lead, but they are going to send us an agreement, which we'll bring forward to the Board. And again, IDOT's commitment is to pay their proportionate share. 127th Street and Naperville Road, this is basically, this is high on our watch list. It's a great candidate for an STP grant, which would be a $2 million grant, which we would like to forward in the future. One of the legs and sides is actually within Bowling Brook and we would look for a continued partnership with Bowling Brook at this location. It's currently a four-way stop and we would ultimately like to convert it to have a traffic signal at that location. We know we get some peak times, especially with the school in the area, and some peak traffic times early in the morning and the afternoon where this area does warrant a traffic signal. Now, this is the last slide that I have, but I will mention that there's also a million dollars within the capital plan as we had budgeted last year for roadway resurfacing that'll be based on the pavement condition that we have out there, the pavement index for resurfacing. We want to continue that program, so that's at the same level. Also, there'll be money budgeted within MFT, approximately a million dollars to continue that program. Again, as Mr. Murphy has, had mentioned earlier, this may be a fund that's a target of the state, so we're going to have to watch that closely, but we haven't heard anything officially on that. So we're going to continue to move forward with the resurfacing program. With that, I'll be happy to answer any of the capital questions, but we're really excited to continue these projects and even more excited to see spring come right around the corner.
The other thing that we will continue to do in our capital budget is Emerald Ash Bor tree removal and replacement. We've removed about 3,000 of the 5,000 trees. I'm looking to Mr. Persons for confirmation on that.
Twenty-nine.
2,900 of the 5,000 trees have been removed, so we continued on that multi-year plan.
And the majority of the larger trees, you know, this heavy wet snow that we think about too as well, ash trees, as Mr. Murphy is well aware from up north, after they die, even within the first year, they become so brittle. And it, and it's so important to get those taken down within that year. And we've been very proactive about taking care of that. So we, we didn't have, we had some incidences with tree limbs, but they were small and it's important to continue that program.
Couple of questions, Alan. On the first page, roadway improvements, we'd spent, we're going to spend a million 950 this year and next year proposing a million seven. I thought we're going to continue 2 million a year into that, just to make sure our roads stayed up to snuff. Are we cutting back on that?
Actually, happy you caught that and I'm going to answer that question because I asked the exact same thing of Mrs. Plakem. What you have here is that a million of that 2 million dollars comes from the capital fund. The other million will come from the MFT fund. The $700,000 is for other various projects within, within the, for roadway work, usually tied back then to grant funds that are coming through and...
Right. Pavement patching is one of them, some miscellaneous engineering to get in preparation for some of the roadway improvements to come. In addition, the Route 30 reconstruction expenditures are listed under the roadway improvements line item. And 127th Street engineering.
Kind of reinforces what Alan was saying though. The bike path improvements, up $40,000, which is good, goes along with our strategic plan. The other thing I'm concerned about, I don't know whether I should be unhappy about it or not, 143rd Street has nothing budgeted over the bridge and so on next year. I would hope we're not letting this thing drop for whatever reason. Maybe there's nothing we can spend it on, but I certainly think it ought to be our, at least in my mind, our number one priority.
Actually, you know, last Tuesday, and I'll, I'll be perfectly honest with the public. I was here on Saturday and Sunday and Monday and Tuesday. Randy and I had a meeting in Oak Brook with some of the key individuals at ComEd to talk about the corridor. And it was a very productive meeting. So I, I want to assure you that that hasn't dropped off the radar. And I want to assure the public that Tuesday, when I was not in town, that the town was in good hands with Mr. Miller behind me here too as well. But these important projects do continue to move forward.
We need to put any money in the budget for it or not?
We still have the grant money, the 500,000 that is coming into as well. And I know that this falls under general roadway improvements. We did get the Phase 1 approved. The next step is we need a commitment from Commonwealth Edison that we can finish the Phase 2. So there's, and CMT will ultimately have to come back to the Board and discuss where they've been and where they're headed with the project to finish the Phase 2. Ultimately, I need that commitment from ComEd. We've already prepaid for their engineering work related to the corridor too as well. So we have a quote-unquote credit with ComEd and we discussed that last Tuesday as well. So it, it was a very productive meeting. I can't really say much more about it at this point, but we hope to have something back before the Board here soon. back before the board here soon.
I'm just happy it's not dead. Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that as well. The grant money we have coming for this project from Will County Governmental League, we had achieved a phase one approval from IDOT right before Christmas, and we've processed all the paperwork and made formal application to Will County Governmental League to get that money released. So we sent that along about a week or so ago, and so at that time, after everything's approved, then that grant money will be released for the engineering work.
Right, so in summary, we're hopeful that we'll receive those funds this fiscal year, and the timing of the budget document coming out and what we expect to have ready to go for next fiscal is still a little unknown, and given the fact that we probably have to come back to the board for some approvals in relation to moving forward any further than what we have done, we decided to keep it out of the budget for next year as far as funding, knowing that in the next few weeks of something to change, when you see the document back in its final form, it may be a little different. If it is, we'll highlight that as well.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing those total things put together. Getting interesting.
Right.
It is.
To highlight a little bit on the revenue side, if you look at your summary page, the capital budget, the revenue for capital budget typically runs right around six, six and a half million dollars. You'll see in the past that we're just over seven million in most of the fiscal years, primarily for two reasons. One being state of Illinois taxes, which is our home rule sales tax. We've been, the way that it's budgeted is five hundred thousand is typically budgeted to help fund the street operations in the corporate fund. At the end of the fiscal year, given the deficit position we've had with our capital budget, we've brought those five hundred thousand dollars back in as revenue to capital fund. So as an example, for the current fiscal year for fifteen, we have budgeted two point six million. Five hundred thousand additional dollars is being budgeted in our corporate fund to fund the operations of our street division within corporate fund. So the fiscal fourteen and prior shows a little over three million dollars. That's what we take in in home rule revenue, sales tax in total. It's been funding our capital fund for the last few fiscal years. The second component is the grant component. So you'll see in the last few fiscal years, the village has been very, very helpful and benefited from the grant fundings that we've received. In the current fiscal year and proposed sixteen, that grant dollar is zero at this point in time, only because the paperwork and the timing of the grants that we'll be receiving will probably not happen this fiscal year that's coming up. If it were to change, we would look at that and readdress and come back to the board if we need to update the budget in any way.
The last thing that I'd like to point out as well is that, as you recall, about five years ago, when we found ourselves with a twelve million dollar negative position on this particular fund, we set up a twelve-year plan in which to get out of that. We have, with this last year's budget, we actually got rid of the negative position in the fund, and with this proposed budget, we will actually reach our minimum twenty percent threshold fund balance. So we're very pleased that we've actually brought now all of our funds to be in compliance with our financial policies, so. Took a lot of heavy lifting.
Yeah, I know.
Second.
We've got some reminders. February eleventh, coffee with the mayor. The twelfth is our HPC. Sixteenth is our offices will be closed, and the twenty-third will be our next committee of the hall. If any of the students need any papers signed, stop up.
The motion was made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.